But I would like to call a meeting in order and we do have a form and we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, to the flag, the United States.
America.
And to the Republic.
For which state.
And.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. They have the clerk please call the roll.
I am Clerk Chopu, I am attending remotely from Heartland Township, Michigan. Supervisor Fountain.
I supervise Bill Fountain and I am in Heartland Township this evening.
Treasurer Horning. Absent. Trustee Jermaine. Absent. Trustee McMullin.
Uh, here attending remotely from Heartland Township, Michigan.
Trustee O'Connell.
Attending. From Heartland Township.
And Trustee Petrucci.
I'm here and I'm attending remotely from Fort Myers, Florida.
Well, that's it.
Yep. Larry Cathy just came online.
Okay.
Thank you.
From Heartland, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you Cathy. Item number four is approval of our agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by Treasurer Horning, any discussion? And I think what we'll do again, sometimes it gets a little cloudy, please raise your hand when we ask for the vote, so all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thanks. Uh, before we call the public, uh, we do have Adam Carroll here, our fire chief, uh, he's on our agenda this evening to give a preliminary budget for the fire department. And we also have, um. Oh, we've got, um, Troy Linger, I'm sorry, Troy's looking for you. Uh, Troy Linger, planner is here this evening. And Troy's going to be available to go over the two resolutions that came through the planning commission. Uh, I asked Troy and he was nice enough to come on with us tonight, if there's any questions, he's obviously the key person that could answer those. Uh, so with that, um, call to the public this evening. And Bob, I'm gonna. Cause I cannot see, come with a, uh, I cannot see Jim.
Uh, I don't see anybody in the, uh, in the chat.
There's Jim.
Or the raised hands, so I don't believe we have anybody requesting for call to the public.
I just, I just got Jim here and he's on media. Jim, did you have something to add to call to the public?
No, Mr. Fountain, I'm just, uh, attending the call, observing today, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. And I don't see anybody else, Bob, do you? Okay then. Move on to our consent agenda. I'll enter.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, uh, by Clerk Chopu and a second by Treasurer Horning, any discussion this evening? Being none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, pending business this evening is, uh, first one is a resolution. Uh, it's a 2021 amendment to the future land use map and comprehensive development plan. Um, these are items that, uh, the planning commission works on, uh, pretty much at a steady pace. However, um, because of how ours works through the, uh, clear zoning, we typically bring different ones at a time because it takes a, a long time to get it through the process. And there's a cost involved with that every time that we do that, so we do a lot of our own homework to get closure, but then we turn it over to, uh, the clear zoning so they can implement it into our ordinance. So with that, I'd like to have Troy give us a brief summary of the resolution at hand and then I can open it up to the board members that may have a question, thank you.
Sure, so, uh, this, uh, is an amendment to our future land use map. We did, uh, the town board was gracious enough to perform a residential market analysis, uh, I think that was 2014. And then just not too long ago, the town board again, uh, performed a retail market analysis. And after we've completed that retail market analysis, the planning commission, uh, spent quite a bit of time looking at, uh, the future land use map and some, uh, changes that could be made. There are six areas in the township that were targeted, uh, a couple of them are multi-family. Uh, they were targeted as just not being realistic to ever be developed for multi-family. And the goal there was to change those to a similar, uh, single family category that is either adjacent to it or butts it. Uh, we did have one commercial area, uh, that was targeted to potentially allow for mixed use. So that's being, uh, proposed as a change to a special planning area. Uh, we have had some interest on a mixed use project at that particular location. And then, uh, another area, um, is next to an existing special planning area where the Heartland Golf Course is. Uh, to change that to yet a third, uh, special planning area. So those are essentially the, uh, six changes, I, I just briefly glossed over them. Uh, and, uh, planning commission spent quite a bit of time on these, they already held a public hearing. It's gone to the county planning commission, they've recommended approval on this. Uh, this step for the board is for the, to essentially initiate the planning commission to go ahead, uh, and do another public hearing and notice it. And then they'll have that public hearing and it'll be back to the board, uh, after that public hearing. And if you've got questions, I'll try to answer them, I gave a very quick cursory, uh, overview of it.
Thank you Troy, you could please minimize that, Bob. That screen. It's, it's easier to, uh, to see everybody's face when we're, we're, are there any questions for Troy on this topic? Or this application for resolution?
I have a question, um, what's the timeframe to come back to the planning commission?
So, assuming that the board acts on that, uh, tonight, that resolution essentially directs the, uh, secretary of the planning commission to go ahead with the notices. And we have a 42 day notice period, so it won't, it won't be at the planning commission for, I, I don't have an exact date, but it's gonna be about 42 plus or minus days. It'll be plus, not minus.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I got a quick question, that 42 days, that's before, when it goes to the planning commission secretary, once she puts the notice out, it's 42 days, that's when the start date starts, correct?
Yeah, we're hoping to start that tomorrow, unless the board doesn't act on that. So, the, the resolution you have there would, uh, allow for the, uh, for us to go ahead, we'll do the notice, we send it. That notice is sent up to all of our neighboring communities as well as the other planning agencies and gives them an opportunity to comment on our amendment. And then, um, we'll hold a, a public hearing at the planning commission. I haven't done the math on that or what the date is, but it'll be more than, it'll probably end up being more than 42 days, I doubt we'll be able to work that exactly.
And, uh, when we do this, uh, Troy, if, if I'm, it's kind of the way it used to be, the, the neighboring communities need to be asked of what this change is. Cause they may have, it may impact their community as well, correct? So they could have input.
Yeah.
To us.
Yes. And we post this, uh, this will be posted on our website, it was previously posted on there, we're gonna put it up again, we'll give them ample time or 42 days to, uh, visit our website. And if they got questions, they can contact me, it's on a 24 hour hotline or anything like that, but they can contact me.
And it's all the communities surrounding us?
Yeah.
Are we talking like Highland Township and Oakland County?
Yep, as well as Oakland County as well, and then the utilities, we gotta contact, we're even supposed to contact the railroad companies, I don't think there's a railroad anywhere near us, but, um.
Thank you Troy, uh, if there's nothing else at this point, I would entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll move to recommend the approval of the amendments to the future land use map and cap treatment development plan as outlined in the memorandum and resolution.
I'll second it.
Uh, we have a motion by Clerk Chopu, second by Treasurer Horning, is there any other discussion? Being none, I'm clerk please call the roll.
Trustee McMullin?
Um. Approve.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine, absent. Clerk Chopu is a yes, trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci? That was a yes, motion passes.
Thank you. The second, uh, nine B is a second resolution this evening, this is a zoning amendment for digital menu board, I believe it's for drive-throughs, correct Troy?
Yep, you're exactly right. Uh, this is for, uh, drive-through restaurants, we had a couple of existing restaurants. Uh, contacted us and indicate they have a desire to replace their old, uh, backlit, uh, back illuminated, uh, menu boards with digital LED style. Uh, what that is, almost like a modern TV screen would serve as its menu board. Um, and, uh, our ordinance currently does not allow for any kind of LED style sign. And, uh, we spent, uh, quite a bit of time at, looking at this with the ordinance review committee, we looked at a number of other communities. Uh, we put together, uh, an ordinance to address any of the concerns with, uh, motion, inflammation, flashing, uh, how bright it can be. In the event there's a, uh, power failure that has an automatic, uh, dim mode to it. So, uh, what you have there is your, uh, ordinance that would allow for several existing restaurants that desire to do this. Uh, and if restaurants decide they don't want to do it, we've kept our, uh, uh, the regular menu board intact for them to have as well. So they would have, uh, an option if they didn't want to have a digital LED menu board, they're not forced to, they can continue with the traditional style, so, um. That's the, what's the essentially happened, probably took a little longer with the whole COVID, uh, closure, but, uh, we, we finally got through it all and, and there's the draft. And if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you Troy, any comments? Go ahead Denise.
Quick question, um, I was reading through this, is there, uh, limit to how bright? I understand that there's dimming capabilities at nighttime, but is it written that it can't be, you know? Out of, you know, so it's so bright for the residents around it?
Yeah, it's, it's limited, I think it's like 2,500, uh, nits. And let me see, I can't find that for you.
There is, yeah, 2,500 during the day and no more than 500 at night.
Yep, you found it, there you go.
How is that compared to lumens? Is there a, a way to compare that?
I, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to compare it exactly, cause I'm not gonna be able to tell you what the lumens would be. But when we did site inspections of this, uh, we found they're no more, they're, they're not any brighter at that limit than a traditional menu board. They're just much clearer, crisper looking, uh, if that helps.
That helps great, thank you very much.
Yep, keep that.
Uh, if there's no more questions, this point, I entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll move to approve the, uh, the. The digital menu boards as outlined in the memorandum and the resolution.
Pass the part.
And a motion back, the second by trustee Petrucci. Any other comments? Being none, I'll have clerk please call the roll.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Clerk Chopu, yes. Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
But trustee Jermaine, absent. Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
And trustee McMullin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and dying C this evening is Adam Carroll, our fire chief, that's gonna go over their proposed budget for 2122. Welcome Adam.
Thank you. Uh, gonna think that this was probably in your packet and, uh, Bob may or may not put it up, I don't know how it all is working, but, uh, uh, the 2021 draft was, um. Uh, approved for forwarding to the member municipalities for consideration for the 2122 fiscal year. Uh, the far left column is the 2122 projection and obviously working backwards through, uh, the years, you can see, uh, where that has gone in the past. Um, the primary shift that you see this year, uh, was there's a bit of an impact on the formula for usage. And the overall fire authority budget, uh, was at about 2.6%. Uh, and because of the shift in usage, uh, that split the Senate, uh, percentages between the townships at 3.1 and 1.1, uh, which is what you can see on, uh, the top revenue part of that budget. Um, beyond that, the projections held up pretty well, uh, we've been seeing an increase, uh, from the Tyrone contract, uh, which certainly, um, helps and plays a role. Uh, in managing our budget, so that works out fairly well, uh, scrolling down through, you can kind of see a grouped the, oh, categories if you will. Um, as far as the, uh, percent change, uh, from the prior year per category. The scrolling down like some of the larger figures would be insurance and benefits at 3.5, um, that's really a function of, um, uh, a little bit, well, mostly two things. Medical insurance, which of course continues to be. A wild ride, uh, and, uh, and work comp, which, uh, fluctuates a little, uh, based on our experience modification and, um, and on the job injury stuff, uh, here at the fire department. So, uh, we're actually in a downtrend at the moment and certainly our open desires to maintain that. Uh, but, uh, but currently that's where that's headed, um. It is slowly coming down from prior years, which is a, just a function of time. So, if you think about comp, it's a lot like your car insurance, a, it, uh, an experience that you have, uh, hangs on for about three years before it falls off. Uh, and that's what we're cycling through right now. Uh, equipment and supplies, pretty much everything else stayed pretty stable, uh, training and education is, is, uh, about a 5%. Uh, mostly because honestly, we're looking to make up a little ground from 2020, uh, and we've got some ground to make up. We were, um, not able to do, uh, in-person training and a lot of things that we would normally do to keep progressing. Uh, we've got a good crop of new folks coming in that we know we need to not only get up to speed, but certainly get them engaged and keep them engaged. And, uh, and so some of that is, is what you see there is us kind of reinvesting in training, um, to make sure we get that up and play a little catch-up from last year. That is about some net of the changes. Uh, certainly open any questions on it, not a lot of big shifts, not a bunch of big new projects in here, uh, just kind of moving along.
Adam, could you explain for the new board members how the usage works and how it changes from year to year?
Yeah.
For the two townships?
Yeah. Uh, is it where you're headed Bob, I think, I feel like, right towards the bottom on that last page, I believe, if it's on there. That's the one, okay. So, uh, what we do is the, the fire authority, um, uh, divides its budget up, uh, on a formula that focuses on usage. Uh, originally, uh, at the authorities inception back in 2003, we were using a formula, uh, generated out of Michigan State University, uh, that included a handful of factors. Uh, call volume, population, SEV, um, and you mushed all this stuff together with some percentage weighting and you came up with a, uh, a percent share. Um, what we found over using that formula for a number of years was that, uh, any one or two of those individual categories, if you recalculated only using them individually or using them in any combination of two or more, pretty much give you the same result. You were really only moving the needles, so to speak, by a tenth of a point, two tenths of a point, something like that. Uh, so in addition to that, we looked at it and went, really, is, is population and SEV, uh, really a function of what we're trying to measure here? No, and in addition to that, call volume is not what is cracked up to be. Um, so the, the short story being, and again, you know, kudos to you for taking a stab at it and, and, and trying to make it work. Um, actual raw call volume is not a direct measure of costs, uh, usage is. So in other words, number of hours that we spend with humans and fire trucks doing work. And so what we did is got rid of the SEV and the call volume, I'm sorry, and the population and focused on just raw usage. So, the, the formula is based on the hours that we spend at emergencies in each municipality. So then we do what's called basically a three-year smoothing, so what we'll do is we'll measure and you can see it up in the formula data section. Uh, we, we look at the calls from October 1 through September 30, uh, of the following year, uh, because we have to use that number to then prepare the budget, uh, for, uh, its initial distribution to the fire authority board at their November meeting. So we measure October 1 through September 30, just raw usage in Heartland Township and Deerfield Township proper, which is these next set of rows that you see. Um, and then we average them out over a three-year period. So what that helps do is insulate both townships really, um, from either a incredibly busy year for one, uh, or an incredibly slow year for one. Uh, it just kind of helps smooth out the roller coaster ride and, and even that out a bit. So, what happens is, so the example would be, the prior year would have been using the 2019, 18 and 17 data, right? So, you know, Deerfield picked up a 22% year in 2020 and dropped off a 23.2%. But while that only sounds like 1%, it's actually a 2% shift, cause they drop one and you pick one up, does that make sense? So that's really the shift that you see going on there, we average those three years together, in this case, the box in the upper left corner is the average of 2020, 2019 and 2018. And then the gray boxes underneath that on the right are just showing you what prior fiscal year percentage splits were historically. Uh, so as you can see, when you look back, they really kind of bounce in that somewhere around 75, 25, um, split, uh, sometimes creeps up a little. And then generally speaking, it'll creep back down a little bit, but it's really floated in there for quite some time. The advantage of this type of method is, is it's, it's truly measuring expenses, right? It's, this is emergency services delivered in each municipality, exactly. The problem with per call is this, um, you know, we run a variety of calls that we, uh, call single company calls. It might be EMS, it might be a fire alarm, it might be whatever, where, you know, two staff members and a pickup truck handle it in like 45 minutes. And we run quite a few of them. Um, then we'll run a much, much, much smaller percentage, like 10 to 15% of calls where we have multiple fire engines and 10, 15, 20 people that are out at an incident for two, three, four hours, right? So if we just measure that by call, it's really underestimating the amount of cost because it depends on which calls. Uh, so the usage thing really, uh, balances that out and gives you an accurate picture of really what the costs spent to handle the emergencies in each municipality was. And that's what we base the budget split on.
Adam, could you, uh, briefly go over the, uh, your capital fund transfers account and how that.
Yep.
You thought, you just have one millage right now, so you don't, the, the equipment actually comes out of one, so I'm sure you can explain a lot better than I can.
Yeah, so if you copy, scroll up to the, um, uh, last page of the actual budget, it's towards the bottom. Uh, there it is, so this 999 section on transfers, um, what that is, is the fire authority saying, we're gonna commit to move this amount of our operating budget to a capital replacement fund. And the concept with the capital replacement fund is primarily to make sure that we can replace capital items because stuff wears out. So what we do is take a lot of our capital items, um, and we put a life expectancy on them and we put a replacement cost on them. And then basically through a spreadsheet, say, okay, we need to target, ultimately, we'd like to save X amount of dollars a year. If we did that, then when stuff wears out or needs to be replaced, we would be in a position just to pay for the item. Uh, where this comes in handy is on some of the large, the, the no-brainer one would be fire trucks, right? Uh, but there are other really expensive items that we have that don't get replaced very often, but when they do, they're a big hit on the budget. And this, uh, capital fund helps take again, some of that roller coaster ride out of the, uh, infrequent but expensive replacement of some of our capital items, like the fire trucks, like the breathing air compressor, like, you know, some of the high value items that, uh, while expensive, we don't, we don't replace them very frequently. And, uh, you know, absorbing them in any given fiscal year is just not reasonable. And in, in addition to that, we're trying to continually position ourselves closer to closer to, uh, honestly, not paying interest for things if we don't have to. They're, 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 they're known costs, we know we will have to replace them, so let's plan and save for them accordingly.
Thank you Adam, we have our fire authority reps, uh, trustee Petrucci and trustee O'Connell, do you have anything you would like to add, or ask Adam?
If you wanna go, Denise, have you got anything?
I don't have anything at this time, I think, uh, you know, through the budget process, uh, there, I understand it very well now.
We try to keep it at about 3% a year or less, uh, we've been able to do that the last few years. Uh. Try to spend money as wisely as we can, uh, only replacing things when we have to. So I think it's basically, uh, Adam and his staff have done a good job over there.
I have a question unrelated, uh, to the budget, Larry Alex, you got a question too? Uh, Adam, through this last year with a lot of people working from home and, uh, probably a lot less traffic, uh. What was, what was your year like with a lot of, uh, unique things to, that were different or, maybe a quick summary?
That is a perfect description, it was unique. Um, so our, what we experienced was really a shift in call volume. So it, it, back to that, you know, we talked earlier about usage versus volume, um, our volume actually didn't move much at all, but the type of calls that we went to changed quite a bit. Um, so early on, you're right, uh, we ran next to no car accidents, we ran next to no car fires, right? There were a couple, but they were very rare. Um, we ran a heck of a lot more EMS calls, um, and then to complicate that, the folks were homework. So as this wore on, uh, we ran a few more cooking fires, we ran a few more improper use of generators, we ran. improper use of generators. We ran a few more, you know, the oddball calls that normally wouldn't happen in the normal routine of life, but now all of a sudden, the routine of life was far from normal. So folks were in some cases, just making mistakes. In other cases, we're honestly trying to get more mileage out of a piece of equipment such as a furnace, such as a air conditioner, such as a whatever. Because A, it was really hard to get somebody to come out and do a repair, and if you did, it was very costly. And honestly, in any and all cases, if they could get a little more time out of it and not spend that money, and and in some cases, that did not work out well. So really, it was just a call volume shift. And we we stayed fairly busy. As far as dealing with the actual COVID virus, we did very well. You know, as of today, I think we've had three people that actually had it. And none of which got it in the course of their work here. They got it from regular life, however they managed to contract it. And that's kind of how our year went. It was very quiet. It was we stressed ourselves quite a bit trying to find new ways to not only stay engaged with the community, but also stay engaged even with our own staff. Because we, you know, we were we were fairly well locked down. The on-duty staff were really the only folks that were allowed in the building for the most part. And made a lot of modifications. Obviously, inspections were zero for most of that time. And we're actually just kind of getting that reramped up and started again. And it's a it's a slow process. We got very involved when when they started opening things back up and particularly restaurant industry. And we did some great work actually with the township and Troy and and the folks in zoning and planning, trying to really help the business community get back off the ground. Wait, what can we do to help you? How can we facilitate this? Let us be involved on the front end, so we make sure we get it right the first time. And and I think we had pretty good success with that. I feel like we did anyway. So that was a good outcome, I think, for them. Obviously, I don't know if we'll, hopefully it pays off for all of them. I'm pretty confident it definitely worked for some.
Thanks, Adam. Clerk Shofu, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a real quick question on the transfers. What's the difference between the capital replacement and the capital replacement prior number?
Okay, so at the end of the fist, at the end of the fiscal year, we get audited like everybody else. And at the end of that audit, what the Fire Authority Board has said is the 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 object is to keep around a hundred thousand dollar balance for cash flow purposes throughout the fiscal year. So at, when we get that year-end figure from the auditor, if it's north, if the fund balance is north of a hundred thousand dollars, we will sweep that amount out of operating and into the capital fund to further the purposes of the capital fund of controlling costs in the long term.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, trustee Jermaine.
May I ask Adam a question?
Sure.
Adam, typically, not only does Heartland Township have an opportunity to look at the budget from the Fire Authority, but so does the other township, Deerfield. Have you had a side of them and what was their take?
The Deerfield Township Board took this up at their, yikes, I think it was one of their February, they meet once a month. I believe they took it up at their February meeting, I think, and had approved it. Obviously, depending on approval, because it takes both.
Yeah, you
So since the township in our case collects the millage, do you need approval for this and action on this this evening? Because your fiscal year starts at the end of this, at the end of this month?
Yeah.
Or when, when we approve our budget, our budget is just for the general fund, correct? When when we do ours, Bob, at our next meeting, that's just general fund.
I believe you need to approve the Fire Authority budget.
So yes, I apologize. I was on mute there. I think Susan's online. Susan, I don't know if you can weigh in on that. I do know that we do have one more meeting. You know, obviously, the 16th, where the General Appropriations Act will approve our budget. We could certainly approve it at that point, but I don't see a reason if there's, you know, buy-in on it this evening to move forward. Susan, you want to jump in? Any thoughts?
Yeah, typically in the past, we've approved the Fire Authority budget right after we approved the General Appropriations Act. So which we have planned for that second meeting and the 16th. But there's no reason why the board can't decide to approve the Fire Authority budget tonight.
I guess if I was to wait, it didn't really say here that we were going to make a, I know we can make a motion, but it didn't really, wasn't really clear that we're going to be adopting. I would prefer we just add it to our next agenda and they're both together. That would, then we can maybe try to get that consistent every year as well, but unless the board wants to act this evening, I'm comfortable with that too, but it just seems cleaner to do it at the same time that we do our other general fund.
I don't want to call it tradition, but more or less that has been the kind of active when we do both. So Adam, I don't think that'll impact you at all if we were to wait till the 16th and approve it with our general fund or General Appropriations Act. If that's the case, then that would be my recommendation if you guys are in agreeance. Just to keep them on the same schedule and for subsequent budget approvals. Yeah, we we run the same fiscal year as the township, April 1 to March 31. Yes, 31. So the key for us is the same as yours. We just have to have an approved budget before April 1. Now, the so what happens in that case is this, your if your meeting, and I think it will this year, happens after the Fire Authority Board, what the Fire Authority Board does is ratify that budget, just so that we actually have an approved budget to start the fiscal year with. And then we'll come back at our April meeting and recognize or reconcile whatever happened with the township approval.
Thank you, Adam. Any comments from board members? Is everybody waiting till the two-week period from now, two weeks from today? Yeah, everyone's good with that. Okay, thank you so much. There's no other questions? If there are questions, Adam would be more than happy to to take them as we go forward. Thanks again for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Thank you, Adam, and thank you, Susan, both for being on this evening.
Yes, thanks, Susan. Our next item is board reports, and we start this evening with trustee O'Connell.
Hello, I just wanted to mention that I guess I should have mentioned it when Adam was on the Fire Authority and purchasing another truck. They're in the process of getting quotes and whatnot. We had our first apparatus meeting on the 17th, and I'll keep you up to date on what's going on with that.
Thank you. Next is trustee Petrucci.
The truck that Denise was referring to is a replacement. It's not an additional truck, so you know. I have no additional information.
Thank you, and I'm a little jealous that you're down there and we're up here. That's for another
It was 85 and signing today again, but it's going to drop down to the high 70s tomorrow, so.
Clerk Shofu?
Can we move, can we mute him? I have no report.
Thank you. Treasure Hornet? Treasure Hornet, did you have any comment this evening?
I was having trouble unmuting there. Our last day of tax collection was Monday. We took in a million dollars in one day. And I think that's the highest amount we ever took in in one day. And our brand-new employee, this was her third day there, and she did a fabulous job. And we're buttoning up, balancing out with the county and getting that all wrapped up for till summer.
Thank you, trustee Jermaine.
I would like to ask treasure Hornet a question if I can. Why, because I've heard this from some township residents recently. They were wondering, and they moved here from other places, why is the day of tax correction so varied from community to community?
Well, there's, it follows state law. State law is cities are February 14. Townships are the last day of February, but they can also go February 14 and charge a 1% late fee if not paid. Our township does not do that. We allow people to pay till the last day of February.
Okay, I think I can remember that to explain to others.
Have them call me.
And the only report that I would have was regarding the teen center. And it's continued to be open, you know, once schools reopened again. And we're still getting almost 25 to 30 students on a daily basis. And it's probably been one of our best years so far in terms of how the kids acted and and, you know, their responsibilities and so I think that we still owe the township a report. And we typically do that once a year, and I know it's in progress. And I will inquire with Kay and the other officers if that will be ready for our next meeting in two weeks. If not, it's in early April.
Well, as I'm close to on that issue, Matt, we thought we'd wait until we were, we could be open again for in-person, and that that actually happened today, so that probably isn't wrong possible. Thank you. Trustee McMullin?
The planning commission approved outdoor seating venues for spicers and I believe maccles.
Yeah, matter of fact, I think I read that on WHMI. That was a very nice article, so I'm glad some some of our local residents could manage that. Just briefly, we had our get-ready meeting today for border review. We were hoping when we heard news today that we would be able to do that in person. But because we put the posting out for border review via that's going to be virtual, we're going to do our best on Monday and Wednesday of next week to do border review on a so it's just a little luck on that. I think it's, I think we've got a good program set up. We've timed today on a format and how we're going to handle it, but it's going to be a little different, but we'll get through it. I believe right now there are between 15 and 18 people going in person. Most of those people are ones that have built new homes. So just to put that in reference, 15 years ago, we did 250. So I hope to, at our next meeting in person, with the assistance of Jim, put some numbers together that that he did through his study, how many new houses we have. This is a 10-year history of the border review. And to see what the huge house was in 2011 in our community compared to what it is today is unbelievable. And he also has tracks new businesses. So yeah, that'll that'll be just a good story to talk about. And I will, I will work with, again, Jim on that. So that's my update. If there's nothing else here on that, we'll move to management support.
Thank you, supervisor Brown. As you had indicated, the Michigan Health Department this afternoon launched basically revised standards for the COVID situation. What is indicated as is as of March 5, we're starting March 5, it has relaxed in-person meetings to a permitted capacity of 25 attendees. It does have some restrictions on it, and it does have some caveats on it, but this is, we're moving in the right direction. We will be looked to hold our board meetings in person. This should be our last virtual meeting for at least a board meeting. So stay tuned for that. We'll continue to follow along. In other news, the Water Main Extension Project down 59 was put out to bid. The bids were received. And I'm happy to report that the project, the lowest qualified bidder, came in under budget. So that'll be somewhat of a nominal cost savings to the developers as well as the township, because if you remember, we are participating in this in the beginning. So that's good news story. We look to have a ward an actual contract the second meeting in April. We're at a point where the agreements need to be reviewed by the developers and then they submit their cash contribution to this project. So we are on track and slightly under budget, so that's good news. And again, as I previously stated, our final budget meeting, this or tonight is our final budget meeting and work session. The next meeting that we'll hold in person, we will have the General Appropriations Act to approve the township budget, and we'll also have now the Fire Authority budget as well. And that will be on March 16. At this point, it will be in person. Final note that I wanted to bring to your attention was, we have once again rescheduled Dr. Lou Bender for the Township Board Workshop. It is April 30, which is a Friday. It'll be here at Township Hall from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So we do not anticipate moving that target anymore. This most recent release by the Health Department will only move us in the right direction, that meeting. So that's what we got going on in a nutshell. Any questions or any comments regarding that information? Thank you for your time.
All right. All right. Next is employee merit compensation recommendation.
All right. Well, what we have this evening here is our standard employee merit calculations would be, I'd like to present. This includes our incentive pay and/or bonus reference data. Historically, what the township has done, the process has been to take the CPI index. We have historically used the Detroit Consumer Price Index. We're actually using the State of Michigan Consumer Price Index this year, and will in subsequent years, because that is how the state shared revenue is generated. So I apologize, there's an error on this. It says 2020 Detroit Consumer Price Index right here. That's actually the State of Michigan price index. What we do is essentially, we take our, the price index is 1.4%, which is basically inflation for the state of Michigan. Then we take and we calculate the increased cost of our benefits to all the employees that are funded from the general fund. And we subtract that from the CPI for a net inflationary adjustment of 1.3851. How the scale works for our employees is, generally speaking, we have pay ranges, and the pay ranges have subsequent steps within them. Ultimately, an employee will reach the end of their steps and then go what's in to known as the open range. So what you see down here in the calculations, the $4,400 here is essentially all the employees that are funded from the general fund that are eligible for their step increase, which means they have not reached their open range yet. And then what we do is we take this 1.3851, we multiply that by all the employees' wages for an additional inflationary increase of $10,465. Historically, what has then happened is the township manager will make a recommendation for additional incentive pay or slash bonus pool. This year, I am recommending moving forward with $8,500. When you total those three figures together, I'm looking for an increase of $23,365. When you total those three figures together, I'm looking for an increase of $23,365.29. You can see for reference, we put on the historical years what they have been. What you'll see is a change in the step wages, and that's part of longevity. As an employee stays here longer and longer, we have less, less employees actually eligible for the step increase because they jump into the open range. That's why this number will continue to drop. It shows that we are retaining employees. We have great staff and that's, that's one of our goals is to retain staff. You can see the CPI index has varied depending on what, what year it is. Last year it was much significantly higher. And then you can see right underneath that, the historic township manager recommendation for incentive pay or bonus pool. Ultimately, as a percent of total wages, the, the amount I'm seeking this year recommending equates to just under 3% increase. It is the, you can see comparables to the, the four years prior. So this will be the lowest wage increase of the five, the five years. And this is partially because we're recognizing the COVID circumstances. And I understand there's different viewpoints on how this was handled and essentially when staff was in the office, out of the office. Ultimately, we also have to recognize the flip side of the coin, which was our numbers never dropped and our community never lost any services. They weren't subsidized. We still turned our metrics and met all of our, we were able to meet the public demands throughout the COVID circumstances and/or shutdowns. So with that being said, what I'm recommending is again, $23,365.29. I should add in the footnotes here, of that, four employees are eligible for step increases per the pay scale. Four employees are eligible for inflationary increases only, which would be just this middle section because they are new hires. They have less than 12 months of service in. And then we have one employee's hours who are going to be increased from 35 per week to 38 for a total of 156 new hours. The base rate for that increase of $3,700 has been actually included in the treasurer's budget. So with that said, I tried, covered that in a brief nutshell, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions regarding this information. And I appreciate any feedback you may have.
Thank you, Bob. Questions from the board?
I just, I've got a quick question. It still seems like an awful lot of money and nothing against our employees. We've got wonderful employees. It just seems like now might not be such a great time to be doing this. I'm just going to throw that out there, you know. My COLA for my disability was 1.6. Averaged out over the last seven years and I lost money every single year. So my benefit has gone down and it just seems like with the COVID and people still not being able to get back to, to life as normal. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Compared to previous years, your recommendation?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
My question was, how does your recommendation compare to previous years, what we've done?
Well, you can see in this column here on the shared screen, last year was a total of 34,000. The year prior was 24,900. The year prior in 2018 was 30,000 and 2017 was 34. So 23 is significantly less than what historically we've seen. And again, that's, that I think is a fair balance between having, you know, we haven't seen a drop in the, the permitting fees and we haven't seen a drop in application fees. We still, as Kathy's indicated, we collected taxes. We had, actually, you know, we still had to read water meters. We still carried all the utilities and services. But I still also want to recognize the sentiments of Denise, and I think there's, there's recognition that, you know, this is a difficult time to be asking for money. So I think my increase is, is fair based on the historical data as well as the level of services that were provided throughout the year.
Any other board comments?
I, I went through the, I went through the numbers with Bob and Susan quite a bit, and I, I'm very pleased with the outcome of this. I don't believe he's overly requesting a merit pool of any substantial size. The steps and the inflationary factors, I think, are just normal business. So I, I'm very pleased with the outcome of this.
I agree with Larry.
I have a question. With the prior years, were we talking about the same number of employees? Or was that a different amount of employees?
That was the same amount of employees. So, and the, the reason that the, now we've had employee shifts, we have new positions, but we essentially, we've had people leave and rehire. So it is the same number.
Any other questions for Bob?
And I'd just like to add, if there, if there's no other comments, what I would like to do is I have to get this incorporated into the budget by the next meeting for approval. So that's why I presented this evening, just to kind of give you a preview of what you will find in there. And I was looking to see if there's any, any feedback regarding what I'm recommending. So I appreciate the feedback and then certainly understand everybody's opinion. This was not an easy year to do it. We followed the same format that we always have historically, and I understand it's just a difficult decision this year.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any final comments this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Assuming that you were done, Bob.
I am. I, I just, you know, I'm running into a little bit of space bar trouble, so I apologize. So thank you all very much. I do appreciate it. And I look forward to meeting you guys in person once again. Yes, some of you I see on a frequent basis. The others, I genuinely miss you, so I cannot wait.
Bob, when do you think you'll have the final budget distributed as a packet?
So you'll receive your next board packet, which it will be included in there. My goal is to have that out by the, let me look at my calendar here. Your packet will be out delivered by the end of the day on the 11th. However, I have Susan working on the actual budget, and what I want to do is email it to each one of you as an individual attachment, separate from the packet. But I want to be clear, it's going to be included in the packet as well, but so you have that as soon as possible to review that. So just more of an FYI on that. I'll, I'll make it in the subject. This is the budget, so.
So I'm going to ask my question again because you didn't answer it. When do you think you will have, when will you and Susan finish it so you can distribute it?
Um, well, I, I mean, I, I would like to say when, as soon as she finishes it, I'll put it out. I would say most likely we're looking at Monday or Tuesday of next week.
Okay, that would be plenty of time.
And I apologize. I mean, that's only giving you guys probably an additional four days or so, but any, any little bit we can give you. But it's going to be everything we've already reviewed in the past meetings. So there will be nothing that you haven't seen before other than we're going to adjust obviously the wages accordingly. And other than that, it's everything that you've already reviewed. So I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Well, I apologize to the rest of the board members. I actually was busy and forgot completely about the, the meeting this evening, starting at 7:00. My mother-in-law is coming back. She has a stage four Alzheimer's. And she was supposed to come back after Easter, and now it's been moved up to next Saturday. So we are working like crazy to get our house prepared with all kinds of handicap toilets and other things that she needs now that she hasn't had in the past. So and for the record, trustee Jermaine was joining the meeting from Heartland Township. And since I think we're almost done, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. So I had a motion by trustee Jermaine. It's second by Clerk Shofu. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. All right. Everybody, safe. We'll talk to you soon.